Well, we do thank you for coming. Trevor and I got together this morning when four people could not come. And we decided, you know, if we could get four or five, it would be good to at least give you the information because I know y'all talk to each other and you would have. So I guess we'll just, I talked to Mr. Francis and welcome on his behalf. I talked to him one o'clock this morning. My two items really are just information items unless you all feel like we need to take some action on the second thing. The first one is that contract deal where if we're hiring someone, we have to bid out, if we're hiring them to do tutoring or academic coaching stuff competitively outside of our Title I tutors, we have to bid that out. And we did not know until recently, we decided last meeting in closed session, you folks will remember, that we would go ahead and hire whoever was on the list. And then we would investigate if that only applied to federal or applied to everyone. And Angie has done really good research for us.
Turn my mic on. Anyway, Angie has done good research for us and the ESA contracts are only required for people who are paid federally. And so that's a good thing. We have auditors with us. Actually, they've been with us for about a week doing a preliminary audit. And then they come back at the end of the school year. And they have procedures that they have given to other school districts because of the new federal requirement for that bid. And they will be sharing that with us and we'll just use it. And we'll do a little bid process when we have stuff like that. So that's just for your information. The other item that we talked about last year a couple times, and we had determined a couple months ago that long gun safes on campus were legal, but we did not know if we had liability insurance coverage. And we talked to our liability carrier and they said absolutely they already provide that coverage for other school districts and that that was part of our coverage that we had for liability purposes. You'll remember those are the ones that have the like hand finger kind of quick access for the, or an access code. But it typically relies on the SRO putting their hand on the safe and getting in. And then there is another mechanism and the only person who can get in is the SRO. So when I talked to Pat about it the last time, he said it's really a political decision now. So I don't know if you all want to take any further action or if you just want us to notify our law enforcement folks that it's legal and we have insurance if they want to install it.
I mean, we can't take any action tonight, any.
No, I know you couldn't tonight.
I mean, as far as.
Just as a group.
I don't have a problem. Personally, I don't have a problem with it.
No, I think we need to proceed with it. I've heard of other areas and I think the law enforcement likes it. I mean, they've got their assault rifle in their car. I mean, it's going to be hard to get to a car if you've got an active shooter inside a building to go out and then come back in. That's a lot of time to me. And I think it would be, you know, it's, it's safe as far as I'd be concerned because I think SROs are very, you know, they're the ones that's qualified. And like you say, the fingerprint access control, it's their fingerprints, so.
Well, if it's okay with the folks who are here, I'd like to just mention that again when we have our meeting on the 15th so we have a.
Think we need to, yes.
Majority of the board there. And then if you all want to act on it, you can. If not, Trevor and/or I can just communicate with them. And the codicil that I would like to give, which most people seem to be doing, is that they don't carry the firearm in and out every day.
Right.
They lock it in there. They're the only ones that can get to it. They leave one in their trunk and they have one there.
Yeah, it's not carried in that.
Because that in and of itself is a problem, not only visually, but if someone knows they're doing that, then that might give someone access to it. So if it's okay with you guys, we'll just mention that again on the 15th. And if there aren't any objections, then we'll proceed. Or if you all want to take action, I don't know if they need to or not, Pat.
I think you probably just need to say, not saying that you're going to do it, but you authorize it in discretion of superintendent and staff. Because there may be some schools you want to do it, some you don't want to do it.
Authorize it. They are in the law with association with.
With law enforcement, yeah.
Law enforcement to do it. And if law enforcement sees the need to do that for the protection of students, they have authority to do that.
That's, I agree with that.
Okay. Will, you think they need to vote on that?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think they need to, I would say that, and I really would, saying, we're not saying to do it or not, but you know, one of the purposes of having law enforcement there and the SROs are for us to provide for safety to the schools. And if in their discretion, they think it's necessary to be helpful, then they have our authority to do that under these provisions. It's a locked gun, no, no display during the moving to and from.
Like Dr. Knowles said, they're not going to be carrying them in and out.
That's right. I think it'd be, I think it'd be doing the wrong thing to say we're requiring you to do that, we want you to do it. If you think it's necessary, if there is an incident, if you think there's a need, then the need is there.
We'll, I'll talk to Chuck about that and we'll put the right wording in front of you all at the next meeting. And then the other stuff are, is just mainly updates from Trevor and then he's got a couple just announcements too, just to keep you aware of a couple things that he and I've talked about, so.
I'll turn my mic on. The first is acquisition of real property. That's the referred to as the Tuscola property, I guess you would say. And did get a report back from Patrick Bradshaw. He has advised, there's basically three sets of testing. The first one is Phase One ESA testing at a cost of $2,300. Essentially what that is, it gives you a historic use in the property as it lays. The historic will let you know, you basically go back, a full research is done on the property to determine whether there ever buried tanks, was it ever used for a landfill, basically a historical context and use of the property as well as the property as it currently stands. The next one was a geotech explanation, which we've already had discussions on that. Basically though, and Mr. Smathers, you can bring them up to speed on this as far as the geotech exploration. There's going to be drilling, the actual drilling itself is $6,400. There's some clearing involved to even get the drill rig to where it needs to be. There's going to be some clearing at a cost of $4,500. And Mr. Smathers, we're a go with the buyer?
Yeah, I.
I mean, the seller?
Yeah, I notified their attorney that we'd be losing some saplings and things like that to get the drill rig in. And that we would discuss that, you know, in the event we don't buy it, any repair that needs to be done at the property at that time.
So that one, you had already authorized to move forward on. And then a third and final one is a wetland and stream delineation. Basically, he put that before you or before me for consideration. The stream is established, that's clear. We know that there is in fact a stream there. But this testing would help, would be to assess whether there are additional wetlands associated with that stream. And the reason he's recommending possibly that additional testing, because there might be additional associated costs if, you know, if the purchase was made and then later on, yes, we knew about the stream, but we did not know about the wetlands. And he gave me some walk around amounts, is about 60,000 per acre to deal with. Mr. Bradshaw felt like there would not be an acre there of wetlands, but any amount is going to add to the additional cost of prepping the land for any type of use. So his advisement was to do, to conduct all three sets of testing, which was the Phase One ESA for historic use and the property as it lays, geotech exploration, which is the actual drilling and the clearing to be able to conduct the drilling, and the third being a wetland and stream delineation to determine if there are any wetlands associated with the stream on the property.
What's the cost of that?
Grand total is 15,900.
If something, if we decide not to buy it, we get reimbursed for that? Worth asking.
We just dug a hole.
Do, well, I just want to know if we don't buy it, if the credit union wanted the information, was there any?
Can we sell the information to somebody that wanted to buy it later on?
If we can do that.
But if we found a wetland or something like that, then we back out of our contract, but they still wouldn't pay for any of the testing pays that we've paid to find out there was a springhead about half way up through there.
It'd be money well spent rather than get into something you didn't need to be in.
I think, I think.
We might have to.
I think y'all.
Really have to.
Once you get these tests, come up with what you check to use the property for and what your costs are and whether you want to go forward or not.
So, and again, for your information and consideration, part of the board meeting. The next is Death Valley Tree Removal. If you remember, there was some discussion there about the pine trees along the property boundary at what's called Death Valley at Waynesville Middle School. We had some property owners that wished to have those trees cut down or removed and needed really to make sure we had some kind of memorandum of understanding between us and the property owners, that that was in fact the case, they would like to have the trees removed and be sure we were, had in writing that we're all on the same page prior to doing so and Mr. Smathers.
What I've done, I'm going to give this to Trevor. He can make as many copies of this as he, as he needs to. It's a form I prepared that says authorization, says I, we, blank, they can fill in the name. hereby authorize the Haywood County Consolidated School System Board of Education, line through its employees, agents, independent contractors to interupon the premises of my real property, the street address of, whatever, whatever their street address is. To permit the removal of trees under brush and growth along the boundary line between my real property and that of the school system by describing deed book 143, page 205, deed book 181, page 453, and deed book 173, 308. Those are the three tracks that make up that property. My Haywood County Register, and it's shown on detached Exhibit A, that's what I did, I just attached aerial photograph of it from the GIS. It's my understanding that as part of the removal, the school system may have to interupon my real property to permit, upon my real property to remove any limbs, brush, or other debris created by the removal of said trees. And I hereby specify grant such access and authorization. This authorization shall expire nine days from the date of signing as evidenced below this place, 350 sign. I just noticed a typo. I'll, I think it's up to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Then ever how many property owners there, so we're going to need to go door to door and say, hey, you understand we're cutting this, sign this. And I don't know that we, just by looking at the aerial, it looks like all the trees are on us, but I'm sure they extend over onto their property. You know how tricky that can be.
Any questions on that?
I guess my biggest question would be, first, you said there's room for all property owners to sign. I'm assuming you'd need the mister and the missus both to sign if there's on the deed or?
It'd be preferable to have both of them or if it's just, as long as you've got authorizations, if you know what coming on, I think that's all you're, preferably have everybody.
Just curious, would Trevor be the one to do that, to go door to door, or would it be maintenance person?
Maintenance, whoever can do it.
I was just.
However you direct.
I think somebody just needs to go there and.
I think that's something else attorney ought to do. He ain't got nothing else to do.
I'll go door to door. I mean, y'all pay me.
He makes, he gets paid by the hour, no?
That's right. I'll say as many as I can see.
I was just curious, I didn't know who actually did.
I think, I think we just make a commitment to get the signatures, whether Joe did it or Trevor or I or whomever.
Okay, gotcha. All right, next item is HVAC position. That's within the budget that was approved. There's an additional 1.4 positions that has not yet been utilized or spent. And so the goal there is, we currently have about 164 back orders dealing with HVAC. And we have posted a position that would encompass that 1.4 in the amount. That position, we are seeking a well-qualified and licensed HVAC person or someone who is capable of receiving the license, in hopes that they are able to then operate under their own license rather than Mr. Buchanan's. It also creates a position within the maintenance department. It kind of creates a hierarchy and given a upward pay structure for folks to aspire to if they so choose by receiving licensing. It's something we're considering for all areas, that being electrical and plumbing. You know, a vertical pay structure is good, gives our folks who are currently working for us a way to move upwards if they so choose. And it creates also a really good situation for the system. Heaven forbid something happened to Mr. Buchanan, everything we do is under his license at this point. That's, that's a very dangerous and risky position to be in. So this will help alleviate some of that strain or stress in the event something were to happen. And again, heaven forbid.
One of the things we talked about back in May when you all authorized a return to pay steps or classified people was in order to, above and beyond that in the future, in order to maintain more of those other ways that we could incentivize them. And so Trevor and I have talked about that and we feel like this is a good first step. We would, we would want to see the actual license in hand. So if we, if we do this advertising and don't find someone with a license, we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't give them the pay mentee with the license. We'd say to them, you know, you're a HVAC one or wherever we typically bring them in, maybe with their years of experience. And you get the license and we'll move you here. If we can find one, then we would come back to you, of course, for your approval of employment with the license in hand. And we, and like, I'm just being redundant at this point, but as Trevor said, we, we feel like it would help our employees if we have a few legitimate licensure holders beyond Joe, electrical, plumbing, HVAC in particular, and it will make us more stable.
Any questions about any of that? I must be doing really good at explaining.
Sounds like a pretty good.
Either that or Dr. Knowles, he has one.
All right. They've got a show to watch at eight.
Oh, sorry. Let me speak up. The next is a proposed right of way for Screech Al, off of Screech Al. We currently have, Haywood County Schools Foundation has an offer to buy, purchase their land. Where the school system comes, becomes involved is the access to that land. The current right of way, and I put items in front of you and I'll hold this up. You can see that there are two pictures. And if you will look at that topmost picture, if you're holding it where Haywood County is at the top, that top picture there shows that, you'll see a red boundary line. If you move to the bottom of that picture, you can see where the current road comes in and cuts across the Beth, the Haywood County Schools property for Bethel Elementary. And you can see ball fields on either side. That is the current right of way or access to the Haywood County Schools Foundation property. Buyer does wish to be given an additional right of way. And my understanding, without having talked directly with them, that they would relinquish that right of way that goes between the ball fields should we give them an alternative right of way. And that alternative right of way they propose would run along that red boundary line there that you can see in the picture. Also have, for your review, the actual, it's a little bit of a different diagram, which is this one here. And the red arrows actually point to the portion of the property that they actually wish to claim right of way on or about. And I think the things that we have to consider here is, currently there are no conditions for using right of way as it stands now. Concerns that I would pose to all of you are heavy moving equipment going across a culvert that may or may not be rated for the weight of an excavator or a dump truck, any of the heavy equipment that you might see involved in construction. And as it stands right now, also there are no arrangements made or discussions had for who would repair the road if it were to become damaged or disturbed to a point it couldn't be used. So putting that information in front of you now in preparation for building the grounds on Monday, so you can be thinking about that and how best to proceed in creating a right of way or sale of the Haywood County Schools Foundation land. Any questions on where that right of way is actually located? I know it's hard to articulate, but I tried to provide you some graphics there where you could look and see what they're actually wanting.
And I need to talk about a couple things, okay? Going back to when we originally bought this property from the Kinzles back whenever it was, if you'll look at the survey map, it has the red arrows on it. There, you'll see it beginning at the intersection with the road. It looks like a fairly straight right of way going up that, up to the, what would be the north or southwestern corner, then going northwest up to Kinzling family. And Trevor has got that marked with the red arrows there. And that's the way the right of way existed at that time. Now, we did, I've got to go back and fix some things and reconstruction, I've been trying to get my old file out of storage. But back in, back in 2006, we abandoned right of way where it.
So they wanted to bring you back.
Turns and goes, the area going, that straight easement was abandoned and goes up through our property, which is now the road that you see there, okay? The couple of issues are, if you'll look at Trevor, this aerial photograph, you'll see where our, our road turns and go, up in the first picture, turns and goes up into our property on up to the Kinzling property. Hey, the right of way at that point in time, went straight on up the road. One of the issues we may have, and I just say may have, is when we did this easement agreement, we abandoned from that point on. So don't.
See what he's talking about, isn't it?
When we go back, we cannot give another right of way over that because we don't own that property now. We gave up that right of way we had because that was existing right of way. So if we, if they come up to the point that we turn right up in our property, they're going to have to turn there and we can give a right of way over across onto our boundary. But unless they work out an agreement with the Smathers or Bowlins, they can't use that existing road there. Maybe they can, maybe they can't. Because that's, as I recall, that's the way the old right of way went because it was a joint right of way. There was some question about it, but there was a right of way between the Boldens, Smathers, and the Kinzles. We gave up our right from that point on, so we just have our boundary line. My recollection is that there was a serious question about this right of way going up through the because of the creeks along that way. And that's why we, we wanted to change it. So we have a right of way, we have a joint use agreement up to the point we turn right on our property. But that, the rest of that's going to have to be worked out. I mean, the buyers need to understand, we can't give them the right to use that old road up to that point on.
With fuel tank?
They're going to have to have that for the.
So you don't want me to give it now?
So that's the first issue.
Okay.
Second issue, I thought this was going to be a more, a larger problem than it turns out because according to statute, and that's 115 C 518, we can only give a right of way if it is for a public road or sidewalk. The board has rights for public streets, roads, or sidewalks. You don't necessarily have the right to give a right of way for a private roadway over our property. Now, I think what we can do is we can relocate an existing right of way. So we'll parse them so we can, we can, we can say, we're going to relocate this one, give your right over this, this piece. But that's all we can do. I thought it was going to be a bigger problem and there was a way to get around it. We just have to abandon a 30-foot strip and then go that process. But I think what we can do is just, is as long as the buyers understand that that existing road that's going up to serve a, maybe the Parker property now and continue on to this mountainous property, they can't use that because we can't reestablish that right of way. And if you look at the old survey.
When you say we abandoned, did we, in other words, we signed off on not ever?
We signed off, said we won't use it and, and we signed, we agreed with at that time with Charles Bolden and Cecil Smathers that.
Quick claim on it.
Yeah, we just, we said, we're not going to use that easement because we wanted, we want to go up this way. And we weren't going to maintain this because there was some question. If you look at that, if you'll look at that, look at our boundary line there, you see that? As it comes up through there, there was, this, this survey was done back, what, 2006, whatever it was? You'll see where. You'll see where, if you start down at the right, there was a 30-foot, I was showing the right-of-way, it sort of curved up and then crossed over onto Mr. Smathers. And those roads were not necessarily where any easements were. So, what we agreed at that point in time was, and really did it for the benefit of the foundation, because the foundation that was getting the property up, which is Kinson's subdivision, upper left-hand corner, there was a serious question whether you could put a 30-foot road right-of-way in there. So, we had to do something so that that could be used by the foundation. It would've been expensive to put a 30-foot road up where the three red arrows are. Now, if the new buyers want to do that, fine. And legally, we can exchange the location, not giving anything more than what we've already got, we're just exchanging the location. My recollection is, that's what the issue was. We did not want to, the foundation did not afford at that point in time to put a road up that way. It was going to be expensive. So, the new buyers, they may have to put some type of road up there, they don't necessarily have to go 30 feet, but you'll see the streams there. I just want to make sure everybody, if there's something...
I saw all the Bolden property, there's a stream that runs right, right up the side of that road, I think.
Yeah. So, that's going to have to be addressed, if we can do it. Now, I'm all, look, I think it's, I think it's in our best interest to do this, just want to make sure that everybody's on the same sheet of music.
What happens if we move forward with this, and the new owner can't get, reestablish the right-of-way going up the road?
Of course, I think that's his issue.
Do we have to go back and reinstate?
Now, if we do anything, we'll be, it will be on the premise that we are giving up, I'm going to call the ball field road, them the right to go over this property where the original right-of-way was. I trust that they've looked at that and have an idea of how they're going to do that. And all that would be their expense.
The second issue that kind of coincides...
Have they talked about that?
Yeah, they, well, I talked indirectly with both realtors today, and I think the buyer is, that's their plan, to create a road. The second issue that I would pose for consideration is, what do you do in the meantime? Like, they are going to be using the existing right-of-way, which cuts right between the ball fields.
I don't think that there's going to be any construction going on over there anytime soon.
You might could have an understan...
From what I understand, no.
You might could have an understanding that they could use the existing road pre-construction, but when they get to the construction phase, we'd like for them to be on their own right-of-way.
Well, once that right-of-way's abandoned, we can always give them permission for a trip, a day, a week, or two weeks. That, they have no...
You can stipulate that.
Stipulate that on a day-to-day basis, or a weekly basis, whatever. But after, after it's abandoned, they've got to go up their own road, and they just need to understand that. We may agree with them, say, "Hey, in consideration for relocating, we'll let you have up to a year, you can just travel it, you know, to, for access to and from it for non-construction But what, the next step is, I'm going to contact their attorney, and start working, make sure that he and I are on the same sheet of music, and he understands that that's... I don't really want to be addressing this again for y'all's benefit, a year from now, saying, "Well, we can't use this, because we don't have water now." Oh, well, all right.
Questions on that?
That lower picture, that 514, is that, that's the Bolden side of it, right?
Lower picture...
On that house, that's, that's the Bolden.
I would say that is correct, without having the deep look in front of me.
Brad's out at the...
No other, no other questions? Next thing is gym floor refinishing. Pose for consideration was Greg Parrott in Carolina Hardwood, to be considered in use of gym floor refinishing. We asked Mr. Parrott to submit some prices for gym floor refinishing, refinishing at all the schools that have gym floors. And he has done so. And also, Royal Wood out of Winston-Salem, who had been previously doing gym floor refinishing, we asked them to do the same, to submit costs or amounts bid for gym floor refinishing. And I just wanted to give you information preliminarily, they look very similar in cost, both of them coming in at, at or about 17 cents per foot. So, again, no action really can be taken tonight, but I just wanted to pose you with that information, and let you know that there are two people being considered for gym floor refinishing. The idea would be to allow schools to choose whichever company they wanted to use, since they are operable in cost. We would, we being maintenance, we would hold them to, you know, you can't refinish the gym floor five times in a single year. It'd still be the, once in the, once in December, and once in the summer, on our large gyms, and once on auxiliary, once a year on auxiliary gyms, so, a total of three refinishes, two for the big main gym, and one for the auxiliary. They'll set that up, select which one they, which gym floor refiner they want to use, and then they'll invoice Central Office, me, and we'll pay it.
Now, middle schools, same type of deal, you know?
Same type of deal. They'll be able to select whoever they want, again, preliminarily.
Elementary schools, that just, maybe once a year, I mean, I don't know, they don't really use theirs as much competition, we don't have as many competition gyms, competitive gyms in elementary schools anymore, do we?
No.
PE and a few practice, you practice sites for some community...
They don't even need it every year, would they, or do they? I mean, is that normal, what they've been doing, or in elementarys?
I don't even think they do it once a year.
I don't even think they do it once a year, do they?
The traffic's just not such that it actually impacts the polyurethane or finish. It's, it's really that, you know, if you keep the grit and dirt off of it, keep it swept, run a floor machine on it, clean it, and sanitize it, should be okay without a refinish every year being needed. And they're little bitty, and they're not as heavy.
They're small, yeah, that's, that's where I was thinking, I said, "Well, if we are, it's a signal, to me, it's a lot of expense, it may not, I didn't know."
That's middle school and high school.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions on that?
I guess my question is, do we, as a standpoint for y'all, for billing, would it not be easier just to have one contractor?
I, you know, and I, I would certainly, I've told Trevor, "Trevor, we're going to disagree," and that's okay, but, and so, he might say something different. But to me, I don't think it matters to us. It's going to cost about the same, and if Pisgah likes one a little better, and Tuscola likes the other one, and Bethel Middle, it's, it's sort of half a dozen, six of one, half a dozen of the other for us. They both have vendor numbers with us, it's going to cost us the same money. We probably would have a little easier time scheduling if we have two providers, because sometimes we, they'd want to schedule it during the same break period, and, you know, one provider would have more difficulty doing more. I don't think it matters a whole lot to us, and Trevor can tell you whatever he thinks, and if it's different, I'll defer to him, because he's done the research on it.
Well, it does, absolutely, it adds an extra layer. But it's, it's like Dr. Nolte said, trying to provide services to our schools, something they're happy with. That being said, holding quality equal or the same, and customer service being equal or same. And currently, you could find drawback or detriment provided by either of the gym floor refinishers, and you could find benefit or praise for either of the gym floor refinishers.
Well, I'll say it out loud, I like Haywood County people, and the kids are in our school system, and been in our school system, and to me, that means a whole lot. My comment.
Okay.
That's all I'll say.
I hear "use local," that's what, what I'm hearing.
Got a good use local announcement coming in just a second, when we finish our list.
Yeah, we have, if there's no other comment on that...
And I have one little announcement, too.
Okay.
You go first.
The next, speaking of local, yeah, we're using a, you know, we had the tank inspections, the gas tank inspections, and again, this is just for information only. And we originally thought, wow, we may be replacing tanks at a, not a large amount. We since then have learned that it was the ventilation lines actually going to the tanks, and that the tanks were solid, and in good standing, and that we needed to replace the ventilation. Using a contractor out of Clyde, an inspector out of Clyde, he has since been up to look about completing that work, replacing the vent or air lines from the tanks. And upon inspection, arriving to do the job, he noticed the big openings, the hatches where you actually fill the tanks, looking down in there, there's some rust. He advised Mr. Shepherd, our transportation director, that we're probably going to get dinged on that, once we get a formal inspection, which would lead to a series of other inspections we'd like to avoid. He also looked and said, "Your current openings are filled tubes, they have a, what they call a pop-up, that actually captures the fumes, and cycles back to the tanker, captures those fumes, and hopefully saves fuel. Those are out of date, and if an inspector comes to see that, they're probably going to ding us on that," which leads to a series of other inspections. And what, what we would propose to do is to go ahead with this inspector out of Clyde, this businessman out of Clyde, and fix it all at one time. Let's don't create unnecessary inspections. If we're aware of the problem now, then let's fix the problem now, so that when it does come time for official state inspection, we're in good standing, and we can move forward and be done with that. That is not a...
We've been blessed by having a, you know, we could've been spending a bunch of money already, so we're very privileged right now, so, yeah, we've...
And that will not be a capital expense, that's a maintenance expense.
Yeah, that's, that's a maintenance expense budget, money in the maintenance lines already, mainly just for your information, you heard about it later.
And I believe that's finally it for me, unless y'all have further questions.
Local guy from Clyde. The other thing, this is sort of a ha-ha funny, I received notification about halfway through our meeting, that Mr. Kirkpatrick and AT&amp;T have restored our internet service for Haywood County schools, and said, "We will open in the morning with full internet service." I just want to publicly thank him, for anyone who might watch this recording.
Way to go, people.
He got on the move, didn't he? Saw the text, is that AT&amp;T, that question mark, yeah, okay, so...
And then, you know, I think Mr. Francis usually puts that board discussion thing at the bottom, if there's anything else you all had or wanted to talk about.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.